Back to the forum.
You guys ready? Y'all ready? Call this meeting to order Wednesday, August sixteenth, regular session. Please join me in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a quick comment before I open this up for um public comment, visitor comment, is that we are doing an open forum on the there will be no decision made and we'll be having a forum on October fourth on the soda tax. So, and it's just a discussion, there will be no decision made between now and then. So I'm gonna open it up to visitor comments and please keep them brief. If you wanna approach the bench.
Anybody?
Just state your name when you get up there, please, and speak into the microphone. Is that on?
Don't press the button.
I'll get it.
I'll check.
Please state your name for the record.
Okay. Uh, my name is Doug Stokes. I am the liquor agent for the city of Saint Helens. So, um, you can all get a copy of this if you like. Uh, I will give you a copy if you need it. So, um, your proposal for the city tax on beverages, uh, that represents probably seventy-five percent of my related items income. So, that's a pretty devastating amount to lose. So, also, I have another sheet that shows you the amount of money that the Oil CC or the Oregon Liquor Control Commission gives not only to the state, the county, and then they, in previous sheets that I, they break it out per city. How much Saint Helens gets, how much Scappus gets, how much whoever is in a incorporated city gets X amount of money based on their population. So, if I lose business, the city's gonna lose business because the city will not get its proper and fair share. Because they'll all, well, some will go to Scappus. So, or the people who live in Portland will buy it there and Columbia County will miss out entirely. They'll get a, will get a, will get a dime of that. It's like gas tax. You know, if you buy it in Columbia County, I'm sure Columbia County gets it. If you buy it out of the county, whatever county, that gets it. So, the amount of money that we could be losing, or I could be losing, or I'm sure everyone will be losing, is probably pretty substantial. I would think I'd want to have people stay in the city and buy whatever they want in the city instead of going out of the city and take the money elsewhere. I don't, also think that, I don't think it's a, a situation that I or anybody who has kids, you know, that's their decision for them not to drink pop or drinks. We're, we're in a situation to where anybody who walks in that door is twenty-one or older. They're making that decision to buy or not to buy. So, convenience stores are a whole different situation because anybody who walks in that door has the opportunity to buy that product. So, we, our market has already shrunk because of the fact the people who have to walk in that door have to be twenty-one or older. Also, that you may, I don't know how you guys are gonna work it, some of the mixes have sugar in it. Are you gonna charge that, them tax? And I've already contacted my local distributors, I've gave them the up, the sheet on this, and they will be keenly interested um in the fact they were gonna have to be responsible for the collection of the taxes. So that isn't something they'd want. So, um, all based on, you know, decisions that you guys make, so, are gonna make. So, if there's any questions that I might bill answer, I don't know it all, but I can tell I know some.
No, I'd just like being able to hear testimony like yours, from yourself about a business owner who's gonna be affected. Um, we are having an open forum on October fourth and uh, it is not a hearing. The paper stated it was a hearing. It's not a hearing. It is a forum. It's a discussion. So, um, that's when I would, for a lot of you, would show up and, and see what is being presented and then present your testimony then. That's when I would show up. That's when we have it scheduled for.
So, after the forum, we start our regular meeting. And in our regular meeting, that's when we could have deliberations and render a decision. And that's October fourth.
We're waiting to October fourth.
That's right. The forum, the forum will be at six o'clock.
On October fourth, that's when you make decisions.
That, that's when, that's when we hear, that's when we hear our, our public. That's when anyone comes forward, yea or nay, to, to talk. Then after that forum, we start our regular council meeting at seven o'clock unless the forum goes past.
It probably will.
Probably will. And then usually on the first agenda item is deliberations on the soda tax. And that's when we would deliberate and make a decision.
Yep. So now that, just for clarification, the Spotlight got the date wrong. The Chronicle has it right. And I think the Chronicle actually put hearing instead of forum. It's a forum. So it is October fourth at six o'clock, um, pre this meeting, six PM.
Six PM on October fourth.
Yep.
And for clarification, up until now, we're just investigating it. We're looking at the possibility.
So, I mean, there's, if nobody says no, then...
Well, it only takes three yeses. We're, I, we got a weak mayor, what they call it. That's what they call it.
Yep.
I don't know, I'm thinking, hey. I thought I had a little bit of guns here.
I would think if nobody says no to, yes, let's do it.
No, the, I mean, the way I, the council has been talking about it, as we've talked about it for like over a month, is about giving enough time for us to hear the community, to see how we really feel as a community before we have staff draw something up and do a vote. It's like if you put something out prior to October, that's not saying hurry up, let's do this. That's saying, let's give people a chance to hear their voices heard.
And we have been hearing from people.
Yeah.
So you, you've definitely been hearing.
We've been hearing already.
Well, that's, that's a good thing.
Yeah, we've been hearing, you know, nonstop, so.
Your testimony tonight is important.
Yes, it's all important.
It's a five minute uh for the record. So you're on the record now as, as being, as testifying. You can give that same testimony again on the fourth.
Yeah, and I, I apologize. I know a lot of you showed up for this, you know, but it is actually October fourth that we're doing this. So, okay.
It's okay.
All right. Hey Doug, thank you. All right.
It's nice to have an audience.
Any other visitor comments?
I just wanted to see if nobody else was getting up first, you know. I'm gonna change the subject. I have three quick things I wanna mention. Number one was, I took a walk on the waterfront tonight and I saw that they have finally started building the staircase up the hill.
Name?
Oh, Howard Blumenthal, Saint Helens. Um, sorry Doug. They all know me. I'm sorry. Um, and uh, they've started building the staircase and I'm just, wow, it's way more than I ever dreamed of. It looks so well constructed on what they have.
I hear they have the parking up, up above too.
Yes, on, on Fourth Street, they, they've done that and, and we're looking forwards to maybe trying to do a little bit of landscaping up there. I'll be talking to the Scappus Bay Watershed Council um, uh, when we do our annual, semi-annual work party in November up there. And we're gonna start trying to do some plants and stuff and have some other ideas to make that a little prettier and connect the two trails together just a hair long. Can if you want. You, you wanna know exactly where each plant is going?
No, but I think the park commission is the problem.
Oh yeah, I'll, I'll talk to it, to him before then, you know. Um, you know, so that, that's going real nicely. The other one that I wanted to talk to you guys about is when I walked the veneer plant property this morning, or this afternoon, I was totally flabbergasted with the amount of graffiti that we're getting out there again. So I'm hoping that the city can get out there and paint that real quickly. There was KKK, there was mentions about our president and, and many other things and different gangs. And I really think that graffiti is something that we need to take care of as soon as it's ever seen. Do we have a graffiti ordinance in the city in any, any way? I mean, I know in Portland, it's like technically you're supposed to paint it over within seventy-two hours. Um, because graffiti, when you leave graffiti up, the longer graffiti's up, the more somebody goes, wow. Everybody saw it. It was worth my while to put it there. If it's painted over, they're like, wow, maybe it wasn't worth all my time and effort in getting the paint if it gets painted over right away. So I'd like to suggest that maybe the city council should eventually look at some type of ordinance pertaining to how long on somebody's property graffiti should be left before it's covered up in some way, you know? Which I think would make our community better and, and, and look better and stuff, you know? Um, so that's two things. The other one is, um, I was kind of disgusted, but I don't know if you guys know that every four to six weeks I walk the downtown area and do nothing but pick up cigarette butts. And in some areas, I am so disgusted in our city with the way people treat it, especially around the corner over here at the Acadia Hotel over there. There's still an area, a parking strip where there must be almost a hundred cigarette butts in a ten by twenty foot area. Uh, this time I picked up a, probably almost a hundred on the corner up here. And I don't wanna say you shouldn't be able to smoke, but we should be able to walk more than five or ten feet in our lives without finding butts. And that brings up that when I was picking up butts the other night, uh, during the Thirteen Nights on the River concert, I was on the westerly end of the Beer Garden and I was appalled at the amount of cigarette smoke that rolls through there. We have kids that are at that playground. A lot of them use that path to go in and out. It's one thing if it's one or two cigarettes that somebody's smoking, but when you basically have a smoking area and you have people that are walking through the secondhand smoke and it's just waifing through there. We have westerly winds, so if you're upwind of it, it comes over that thing, it goes down onto the walkway and it just filters all over that whole area. It goes towards the playground and everything else. I thought that, you know, we wanted to try to protect our kids especially from secondhand smoke. So I'm a little bit concerned if there's something that could be done to try to control that also. The, when I walked over there tonight, the amount of cigarette butts that are left behind in that area after a concert is just appalling to me that, you know, so.
Howie, I sent out an opinion on my, on my report to the citizens, uh, that comes out quarterly and suggested that, uh, that suggested the problem that our public works people have. It's not just a bag like that that's going in the river. It's like a fifty-five gallon drum every time they clean the filters out of cigarette butts. And so, yes, it is a huge problem and I'm glad that you brought it again to us to remind us.
And parks are a non-smoking area.
Well, and that's where it gets really funny. It wasn't that bad when I walked the waterfront trail today, but I've been doing this for about two years. And basically, most times that I walk the gravel trail out there where it's supposed to be non-smoking, it's one butt every ten, about ten to twelve feet. And, and if I wasn't going through there every four to six weeks, you wouldn't be able to walk a couple of feet without finding cigarette butts out there.
Thank you.
I do have to admit too, that I must appreciate, a young gentleman actually gave me a couple of dollars the other night for all my hard work that I was doing. I have gotten a chocolate chip cookie from the movie theater for my hard work and a broken scone from the bistro and a soft drink one day, so. I do get rewarded a little bit for my hard effort of just doing it, because I just walk around with a pair of grabbers and each one of, one of these represents a grab and a put in the bag.
I've seen you out doing it. I appreciate it.
Yes, so. And, and we want our community to look better too. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Howie.
Uh, no, I was gonna ask after you're finished, I'd be interested in knowing how many of you were here to oppose the soda ordinance?
Four. Okay, those, those for it?
Yeah, for it. How many for it?
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, other visitor comments? Okay. Ordinance, final reading. Ordinance number three, two, one, seven, an ordinance making certain determinations and findings relating to and approving the Saint Helens Urban Renewal Plan and directing that notice of approval to be published.
Move we adopt ordinance number three, two, one, seven.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve ordinance three, two, one, seven. Did you say seven, one, Keith?
I guess I said one, seven.
Okay.
Could've.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none. Okay, resolution A, number seventeen ninety-five, resolution of common council of the city of Saint Helens, Oregon, authorizing interfering loan and city water and sewer fund to the Community Development Fund for fiscal year two thousand seventeen eighteen.
I move we adopt resolution number seventeen ninety-five as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution number seventeen ninety-five. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolution number seventeen ninety-six, resolution amending the city of Saint Helens system development charges for water, wastewater, stormwater, and parks and superseding such rates in resolutions number fourteen sixty-nine and sixteen forty-one.
Move we adopt resolution number seventeen ninety-six?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution, bless you, seventeen ninety-six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, resolutions number, number seventeen ninety-seven, resolution establishing the methodology to annually adjust system development charges for inflation.
Move we adopt resolution number seventeen ninety-seven.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution seventeen ninety-seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing none. Resolution seventeen ninety-eight, a resolution establishing the economic index used to annually adjust water, wastewater, and stormwater monthly use charges.
Move we adopt resolution number seventeen ninety-eight?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve resolution seventeen ninety-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Okay, approve and authorize for signature amendment number two to the state of Oregon, two thousand eight, two thousand thirteen, fund exchange agreement for various street improvement projects. B, agreement with E to C Corp for special events management. C, sewer connection and pre-treatment program implementation agreement with Columbia City. D, agreement with ODOT for artistic landmark sculptural maintenance for new gateway sculpture and E, contract payments.
I move we approve and authorize for signature six, A through E, as read.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda for acceptance. A, planning commission minutes dated July eleventh, two thousand seventeen.
Move we accept consent agenda seven, A.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Consent agenda for approval. A, council work session, public hearing and regular session minutes dated June twenty-first and July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. B, exclusive use permits. C, O L C C license. D, animal facility license. Uh, E, accounts payable bill list.
Move we approve consent agenda A, excuse me, eight, A through E.
Second.
I like the way you said that, C O L C C.
Did I? Did I say that? Oh yeah, it was, wasn't it? Okay, a motion's been made and seconded to approve consent agenda A, eight, A through E. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, um, so I would like to make a statement. Um, I, I'd like to make a clarification regarding something that was said in the work session today. One Credit Union is not taking marijuana money at this moment. They are currently exploring and researching the possibility, but at this time, they are not accepting marijuana money. One Credit Union is a wonderful community business and I appreciate all the donations and great things they do for the city for the, of Saint Helens and the community. So I just wanna get that clarification from earlier. And then, uh, um, again, it was a huge success in the citizens' day in the park. Um, also, I would like, uh, Keith and Jay to keep a watchful eye that there's supposed to be some, uh, a donation coming from Dutch Brothers to the youth council. So, and I'm kinda curious at how much that'll be. Hopefully, hopefully they did quite well. And then, um, hey, we live in the Pacific Northwest and it's fishing season. Right now, we have that Columbia River is gonna be stuffed full of fish here in a week and go for about a month. If, uh, any of you counselors would like the opportunity to go out on the boat with me, you are welcome. And I, and I only have, uh, one person that's gonna be going with me, I think September first, second, and third. But if you'd like to go out, just give me a call and I will take you out fishing.
How much is a fishing license?
I think you can get a, um, a day one for seventeen bucks.
Depends how old you are.
Yeah, if you, if you're a pioneer, well, no, 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 no. If you're a pioneer, you get a license for free, but the day use is all in one. It's all inclusive. It's a tag and a license all in one. So you're right, if you're a pioneer, you get a free fishing license and then you just buy the tag, which is only twenty-some bucks, so if you go fishing twice. Yeah, but if you go fishing twice, it's better to do it that way. Yep. So I wanted to throw that offer out there to you guys because, hey, I love fishing and, and if you've never caught a Chinook, you must experience it. You really truly must, so.
I have caught salmon, just in another state.
Yeah, well then you've caught salmon. And that's all I have, so.
Not on a boat.
So, let's, uh, Counselor Locke.
Uh, just wanna state again that, uh, we're looking for, uh, commissioners on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission and also the Arts Council needs members. Is that correct? And is there any other commissions that need volunteers or we? Okay, so, anyway, if you know any friends, neighbors, whatever, that wanna get on the, either the Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission or the Arts Commission, give us, get an application at City Hall. Okay?
Counselor Carlson?
I think I said everything I need to say earlier.
Okay, Counselor Martin?
Well, we had, I had extensive, uh, park recommendations, so I wanna thank the council for, uh, bearing with me while we went through those recommendations and, and I wanna thank you again for that support.
We gave you a support?
We got support.
Oh.
All the way through. Uh, Howard Blumenthal brought up something very interesting. Uh, and he's, was, you know, talking about graffiti. And it seems like we've had this conversation before, uh, quite some time ago when we started noticing graffiti and getting it painted off the fences and those kinds of things where it started to reveal itself. So, I would like to make certain that the council all is aware of that ordinance that exists and if it need, and we need to talk about it and get some, um...
So there is ordinance.
Well, there's, Terry, no?
I don't, I'm not sure there's one. Not one that requires a homeowner or landlord to clean up within a certain timeframe.
So, I'd really like us to, uh, direct staff to, uh, put that on the agenda for discussion, for a discussion item shortly. And that might include, might not, might include also broken windows and boarded up windows. Um, there's, I know that Mayor Giuliani years ago in New York cleaned up that city with graffiti and, uh, requiring landlords to, uh, repair their broken windows. It cleaned it up just like a snap of the fingers. And, uh, and it's kind of a tipping point for other issues for our city as well. So, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to make certain that that gets put on the agenda if that's okay with fellow council. Thank you.
Counselor Khan?
I have nothing this evening.
All right, let's go to the department reports. Terry?
You know, I was thinking, uh, with what Howard brought forward, if we can get Doug to agree to collect a nickel deposit on every cigarette sold, you'd never have another cigarette butt on the ground. You'd be a rich man. Yes, he would. Uh, a couple of things that I forgot to mention this afternoon, and I know that we got long-winded and went, went long. Um, first of all, to Keith and Jenny, um, I wanna just let you know that, um, Oscar Coy is a hundred percent on board with this idea of youth council and he's excited and looking forward to the first meeting in September. I'll be at the one in August twenty-eighth and then, uh, he'll take it from there, starting in September. So that, I'm looking forward to that, uh, relationship and how that, uh, will move forward. Uh, I didn't tell you at our noon, our, our afternoon meeting today that, um, I applied for a grant through the COPS, uh, program, COPS is Community Oriented Policing Program. It's a Bureau of Justice federal program to, uh, restore police positions around the country. Um, but it requires a, um, specific enforcement focus or target. And a lot of communities, uh, bigger communities, much bigger than ours, uh, that were successful, uh, reached out and looked for money for, uh, gang enforcement, reduction in firearm violence, uh, crime prevention type issues. And much of the stuff that was successful in previous grant years really doesn't apply or doesn't fit in Saint Helens. Firearms violence, gang violence, it's not, we're fortunate in that regard. So, uh, I approached the school district and Superintendent Stockwell, and we came up with an idea, uh, that would, uh, implement a second school resource officer or SRO in our district. We used to have two several years ago and, uh, with reductions in staff, we let that spot go in about ninety-eight, I guess, anyway. Uh, I applied. Uh, Jenny, Dim Show helped me with that. She did a great job. And I think that we came up with a pretty compelling package, but I'm sure everybody that applied has the same thoughts. So, uh, we will know in about another month if we're gonna be successful in receiving that grant or not. It's on, based on the fiscal, federal fiscal year, which starts in October. Um, so the announcement should be coming out very shortly. It's, it's a match grant uh, in that it's a seventy-five, twenty-five split over three years, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar cap. We'll see what happens. Uh, I, I, I remain optimistic. But I wanna just start some dialogue. I, I know that there's been conversation amongst counselors and Matt and some of you and myself over the last couple of months about doing something about our staff and getting our, our police department back up to where it needs to be in terms of numbers. This is a timely conversation in that just yesterday or Monday, I keep, my days mixed up, Monday, I'm sorry, we interviewed and came up with two really good candidates. I wanna hire both of them, is what it boils down to. Uh, um...
Well, I, I would like to see some areas, you know, I, I know some citizens are, have complained in certain areas that have traffic problems.
Well, and that's, that's where I was getting, uh, Mayor, that there are so many things that we lack in our community in terms of enforcement because we are...
I, I see Shawna here and she's the, on the corner of, uh, um, North Vernonia, right there by Sherlock's.
We are, you know, our officers on, especially in afternoons, evening shifts, are, they're going from call to call to call. Really not giving a lot of attention to those quality of life issues, uh, traffic enforcement and, um, we're missing things. We're missing stuff. And I think that, uh, ha- having an extra officer on the street is gonna provide that relief. It's gonna give us that extra body that is going to allow us time to do those things that are... Time to do those things that our community expects from us. Anyway, I I just wanna start this this dialogue. Um Matt, I don't know where he went, but. He's got all the money. Uh and uh. You know, it's um.
He's out trying to get more right now. He's out there campaigning. He really is. He should be.
I'm telling you, we need to change it up and go with the cigarette butt tax, but that's um. Okay, cigarette butt tax to buy a new cops. I'm stretching. I'm I'm stretching, I know, but it's um, you know, it's it's been near and dear to me and you guys have heard it from me every budget season. We don't routinely get more than one candidate in an applicant pool. We've got two. Susan interviewed these guys on Monday and. You know, uh uh if you came down and said yes tonight to hiring another one, I could come back another month and say, okay, now I gotta hire a second school resource officer. And now we gotta add another one. But um she's shaking her head and going, what are you doing? Are you crazy? But um it's uh. While Matt's out there campaigning, uh I I I don't know where we're at. I I uh we're we're mid-budget. I mean, the budget season just started. We haven't even. But started the budget year. Um but as I've heard you guys talking and I've heard the community talking, things are starting to change. And I feel like we're turning a corner.
We are.
And I'm not sure if this is the right time to be asking, but um that's what I'm doing.
I think it's the right time to be asking because we finally have two candidates that are really good, a really good fit. And it's been hard to find.
I I and I don't think we have to wait extremely long. I mean, if we're gonna discuss it, let's do this in the work session and really get down to brass tacks and have Matt. Uh we'll all direct Matt and see where where we're at and. We're what? We're only a couple of weeks away from, yeah, a couple of weeks, right?
Number four.
Three weeks? Three weeks. Is that too long to hold?
Survey the council. Survey the council, see what they say. I mean, I'm I'm for doing that. I don't know if Keith is.
For doing what?
For putting it on the agenda and talking about it.
Oh, yeah.
I I thought he was ready to prove it too. I thought we were getting ready to say, you got your money right now, Terry.
I was waiting for a motion.
Hallelujah. Doug, you almost sold it right there. Doug Doug almost pushed it through.
Not outside the realm of possibilities. There is, there is capacity in the budget with unfilled positions such as the building department. That could be re-appropriated.
But I mean, can pretty consistently, the police is coming up short-staffed and over and overtime and under an hour is filled. And that's been the case since I was elected five years ago. This is not something new. It's not something temporary. You're way over and overtime, way over, police are getting hurt because they're working double shifts and they're working like crazy. And it's like just trying to keep people safe in their neighborhoods. And it's like, you guys are always. Everybody's working all that they can and you are always short and you're always running ads and it'd be nice to have enough bodies.
So it's not out of the possibility of the realm is what I'm hearing with the discussion. Let's just get together with Matt though a little bit and and research it just a little bit more.
If he was in here, he would say it was possible because we've talked about it.
Yeah.
Yes, we've talked about it too, so. Fly it up to Flagpole?
Run it up.
Or do you wanna?
Run it up.
Wait three weeks? We have, I mean, three weeks, this other candidate may not be here.
Well, I I know that there are certain neighborhoods that would like uh another police officer sitting there at random through certain hours of the day. Just to kind of make a statement that.
I mean, how many months is it from the time you offer someone a job until they're wearing an offer, wearing a uniform in a police car in our community?
Well.
That's a long time. And so it takes a while to react to.
If uh the young man that I offered a job to this morning, um if all goes right, like I said earlier, we'll have him on board on October first. Uh academy date for him will probably come uh first of the year because we're already closing up on this this calendar year. Uh he'll be gone for four months at the academy. He'll come back, have four to five months of field training. It'll be this time next summer when he's out on solo patrol. So um you you're you're not uh gonna see the benefit of that extra body for.
That's my point.
At least another year. Uh unless something happened to the guy we're talking about, we have to go out again. And we come up with a lateral, which is tough to do, it's hard to do. But if we had a lateral officer, now you've shortened that whole thing down to just a couple of months and.
Are both of these candidates brand new?
Brand new, yeah.
So you're saying that Matt would?
I mean, procedurally, it'd be some budget amending and some moving, moving money around, but yeah.
I I would, I mean, I just would like to make the motion that pending Matt being able to make those movearounds on the budget. That we let you offer that other person.
Second.
We're going through with this.
Let's vote, come on, let's go. What are you waiting for?
Motion's been made and seconded to approve that uh the hiring of a second officer with the um. By moving the appropriated funds if it checks out. All in favor?
I would like to do a discussion, if that's okay, after a second.
Sure.
If I could ask a question?
Question.
Thank you. So we need, one of the things that we, very timely. Because one of the things that we need to do is do, I felt uncomfortable about just what happened. I mean, talk about something that was done in haste. Without even con- talking to our finance director to see how this could happen, whatever. I felt really uncomfortable. Now that he's back in the room, I feel a little more comfortable because my recommendation was going to. See if we could get him back and talk about it. So I just hope that this doesn't happen too often. Okay, so that we just railroad things and and not really kind of look at the consequences and the effects. Especially financially.
Yes, just so you know, I mean, I I was listening to our city administrator. Who said that he has talked to Matt and assured me that Matt was for, so right now, Matt, a motion's been made and seconded. To go ahead with the one officer and look at the possibility with you looking at the funds of hiring the second. Officer if it works.
I can tell you that from looking at the financials that I have right now. And talking with Terry about where that person might step and obviously I kinda know where a officer is gonna cost. Which is about a hundred and twenty thousand when you include salary and benefits and everything. Initially, it may take in a little bit of a hit from the general fund. But I think the overall outcome of the increased enforcement and the increased service level of police. Uh is very much needed. And I think it is a well-worthy cause that eventually, probably likely next year. When I say eventually, I don't mean three or four years down the road. It will pay for itself.
So Matt, I really appreciate that and I I need to caution all of us. With what has been asked of us today. Five thousand, oh no, ten thousand dollars for a. Ten thousand dollars worth for the Habitat for Humanities, sixty thousand dollars for the senior center. And now a new police, okay, so that's what I'm hearing today, okay? So I just wanna caution, caution us of just making decisions just like that. And making certain that we do some due diligence.
Correct. I am very cautious about the sixty thousand dollars because um like many departments in the city. I do anticipate a little bit of extra um in in budgets, considering salaries and benefits.
And there is a, there is a, there is a possibility and it's not completely there. But that part of the other officer could, if a grant came through that Terry applied for, could be partially paid for. Is that correct, Terry?
COPS grant.
Well.
The second one.
The grant will pay for.
That's a separate.
Seventy-five, twenty-five split over three years, up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand cap, which means split seventy-five, twenty-five, we might only have a year and a half.
It's only a possibility too.
If we get it.
Yes, yep.
Regardless, we need that officer and they're hard to find.
Well, and and I I keep trying to re- restate this point that the SRO position is just that, a school resource officer position.
Yes.
And the other things that we need in terms of traffic enforcement, public safety, community policing, that's gotta come out of a different. Position, a different assignment, and uh it's two different.
That's why we're, that's what we're talking about too, right? The the two we're talking about are one and one.
No, the one that we're, well, let me back up. The one that I offered the job to today has replaced the position that we had to let go of.
Yep.
Bring us back to being whole.
Sure.
This other young man that's kind of in the pipeline would be an additional position. Thinking this public safety, traffic enforcement, c- community policing aspect. If we get the grant. We're gonna have to come back and have this conversation about that other position and how we.
Make that work.
Make that difference.
That's a good problem to have though.
It's a good problem to have. And as Matt has pointed out, uh because it's, well, it's in our discretion. If we take the grant, we gotta figure out how to pay for it. Or we tell the federal government, thanks, but we can't fill it right now. Uh that'd be unfortunate. But that's our option and we can, we can do that. So we don't have to. I want to. I I think that we all do. But uh we can't because Matt says we spend it all on this other guy. You're right, it's a good problem to have because it gives us options.
Yep.
I think it's a very opportune time with going through these interviews and actually finding two officers that could potentially fit. We haven't had very much success in the past of finding an officer and and having them work out. So when an opportunity presented itself that, hey, we do have two candidates, I think it's really worth taking a look. And I do believe that it will pay for itself uh with, by this next year, uh with the increased enforcement and service levels of community policing.
So really what we're approving, Matt, today is only the budget for one more because we're just filling a spot with the first guy.
Correct.
Okay.
Terry would have to come back in three or four weeks or a month with the another discussion if it approved for the grant. Correct.
So, so that kinda changes what we made the motion of though, didn't it?
I made the motion because Matt was outside, pending the discussion with Matt.
Yep.
And Matt has just given us this, our information.
Just to.
Still stand, shouldn't it?
Cover Doug a little bit. Uh I know I haven't had this discussion with you, but I have talked to a couple of. Matt and I have been talking three, four weeks about this, something like that and whatnot, so. And John also has been included in it. So it has kinda been vetted out. Hasn't so much with the council just because we haven't met and whatnot. I, and I wasn't gonna go down the road tonight, but it just presented itself.
Knowing you.
So, anyway.
You got it done.
Well, we gotta, we gotta vote on it first.
A motion's been made and seconded to approve a uh full-time new officer. To welcome him to the city of St. Helens. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none? There you go, Terry.
Thank you.
You didn't wait for a vote.
Sue, do you want anything?
I mean, we're talking about picking up cigarette butts and removing graffiti. I think we need more people in the parks, so.
Yeah.
Absolutely, we do.
Okay, great. You wanna make a motion there? Okay, alls I hear is crickets now. Um no, just one quick thing during the work session today, I got an email from um contractor. Who we've been going back and forth, um doing some corrections to their pay request. It's for the storm drain project that was finished up last year and they had delayed sending us the bill. We're trying to get that paid out of the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget year, which Matt needs to close at the end of this month. It, I just glanced at one number on the pay request. It looks like the same number that I came up with. But I gotta verify it. If I do, Matt will be sending out a request to the council to have um that paid. And then it'll, it'll still be on the next month's agenda, but we would need to pay it before the end of August. So that we can get it off the, off the books and close out the fiscal year. So just wanted to let you guys know that that's, hopefully, you're gonna see that. I've only been working for eight months on this.
So does that include still redoing the dog park?
Pardon? Redo, no, we went up there and looked at that and um and that agreed. That that what was up there wasn't caused by their equipment. It was caused mostly by the parks people going up there and doing some work afterwards. So he was gonna go up there and grade that out a little bit and.
Nothing's ever been done because it's it's hard now.
Talk to him about it tomorrow.
But anyway, it it, no, it was caused from their being up there. I mean, but anyway.
Well, we we all went up there and looked at it and came to a conclusion that. They had done the restoration work, then our people went up there and did some maneuvering. Because they, when they backed out, they smoothed everything out and didn't leave any of those ruts up there on their equipment, so.
Right, but they, they made all the mud though that made the ruts and everything.
And they put new gravel on the top of that before they left. We have, well, we have pictures of it.
Well, I go up there twice a day. I know exactly what was there and I know what's there now. It's not the same.
Okay.
Okay, that's.
Okay. It, we'll talk to him about it tomorrow.
Thank you.
Anything else, Sue? Okay, Matt.
Hi. I apologize. I wanted to make sure and give my business card and everything to the people that attended tonight. So I could meet with them individually and talk about things, so. Um so I apologize for that. The one thing that I pushed over from earlier's meeting has already been brought up and discussed by Terry. So I have nothing to talk about.
You thought you were gonna have a half hour?
Okay, John?
So one of the things I didn't talk about during the uh the work session was, at our last meeting, we had Tony Doggett come from St. Helens. Marina talking about, or concerns about uh transient boaters and. That issue has got a lot of attention in the paper and press and um social media and rippling through the the boating community. And I've been trying to address with whomever I can, the marine board, the sheriff's office, um to try to get some action. Well, we have, we have tools in our toolbox and it's basically borders down, boils down to enforcement. We need somebody to enforce them, enforce our rules. There's, Portland has been deemed to be fairly successful because they come in and they just move people along. We have the additional problem of people camping on Sand Island for prolonged times and leaving their messes there. And in some of the discussions with the marine board, um you know, what can we do? And right now, we have this five days and thirty thing and they have to move. The Department of State Lands has this, you have to move more than five miles. You're supposed to. Again, it's an enforcement thing. Some of the additional tools that they recommended were, for anybody longer than a day you stay, staying the night. You could do some kind of a permit system and as long as the permit wasn't two, more than two dollars, you could do a permit and you could ask for some additional information. Like uh that they both be licensed, they has to have a license in order to be on the dock. It seems like a pretty simple thing. Proof of insurance, contact information on the boat, so we know who's there and what they, what they can do. It seemed like some pretty fundamental, easy steps. We're getting people that come down and just take off and go to wherever. And say, you know, I have an emergency and I'll be back in a month and they can't really cut it loose and we can't impound the thing. We can't, there's just not a lot of options there. But um anyway, we're working on it. Um you know, ideally, we, the uh.
So are you saying we're limited, John?
Well, we're limited to some extent, but it's fundamentally boils boils down to enforcement of dedicating resources to, to, to working on it.
Yeah.
The um Columbia River Yachting Association has basically blacklisted St. Helens docks. From all the the harassment and nefarious activities that go down on the docks. And I'm hoping to do steps to bring back, to build that trust back and get the boaters coming back and frequenting our businesses and come to our community. That and not to forget that we have a continuance of the executive session, so.
Okay. Okay, so uh I see there's a few visitors that showed up. Well, Shawna did show up. Do you have anything you'd like to step up to the podium for? Okay. Okay, well, I'm gonna have to ask you guys to leave because we took a recess on executive session earlier today and we're. and we're actually getting ready to go back into it, so. We're getting ready to go back in.
All yours.
You can take that with you if you want.
Thanks for coming, you guys.
Do I have to read it? 'Cause we went into recess, Kathy, Kathy, or?
Yeah, repeat it, yeah.
So we're going back. Okay, we're gonna go into ORS, Executive Session ORS one nine two point six six zero E, Real Property Transactions and H, Consulting with Council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to go into Executive Session ORS, uh, one nine two point six six zero two E and H. All in favor? Posed? Okay.